Okay, we have a big agenda tonight, so let's get started. Marge, would you like to call the roll, please?
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Ms. Dove. Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Mr. Capuzzi.
Here.
Fierdamondo. Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Could all rise, thank you, Marge. Could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? The first item is a proposed ordinance amendment to the Township zoning code.
So, the ordinance committee of-
Ms. Kirk?
Hello. The ordinance committee of the Board of Commissioners has asked me to bring this proposed ordinance amendment to the Planning Commission for review. It is an amendment or an addition to the supplemental regulations for a limited municipal exemption consisting of the following text: "The provisions of this chapter shall not apply to land and buildings or portions thereof owned or used by the Township of Havford for governmental use and purposes." The Township Solicitor did provide a list of other municipalities that I have left in front of you, which I haven't counted, but other municipalities that have similar ordinances. This is not something that is, that we are creating precedent of. It's something that does exist. This would only apply to governmental uses. So if there were to be a use or building or property that we were renting to a non-residential use, such as the currently vacant Township building or old Township building, if we were to rent that to an office use or some sort of outside use, these exemptions would not apply to them. It would only apply to government facilities for government uses relating to area and bulk and use.
Any comments from the board?
So I would assume then that if this ordinance is adopted, that any work that would be happening, say at the Brookline School for the new park or for the parking lot, for the library, that would not go through the land development process?
This is only for zoning exemption. I have not seen any sort of proposal for a land development exemption. Now, the Board of Commissioners is able to waive anything from those other sections and chapters of the general laws. So that is a legal question that I am unable to answer. But I would hope that they would still seek land development approval, but I cannot be certain. Yep.
The way it's worded, any other comments?
The way it's worded, it says owned or used. Therefore, a parcel owned by the township, a parcel owned by the township but leased out to someone else could be subject to this provision. The idea may be that it's only if the township actually uses it, but that's not what this says.
Owned or used by the township.
Exactly.
So they mean as a government entity, not as a, that's why it's a limited exemption, because it does not apply to other uses that are not government-oriented or government-based.
Again, if, the way it's worded, if the government owns the property and doesn't use it, it has rights under this provision.
Yes.
The Township Solicitor-
The or means one or the other.
The Township Solicitor would disagree, but if you would, you know-
Well, that's what the words say, or.
I understand, and actually that's why I sought a explanation, a further clarification on this this afternoon.
Well, then I move to table, so that they can clarify what they've written here.
Oh, we-
I would also like a little time to look at this, because we've had a lot of issues in this township with citizens' concerns about our legislative body doing things, or this body doing things, that without adequate notice. And whether it's owned by the township or used by the township or anyone else, I think the neighbors should know about it. And if the, well, if the Commissioners feel there's a need for a zoning change, they can do that piecemeal with notice to the neighbors. This would not allow for notice to anyone.
I understand.
Is my concern.
Sure. I'm not here to defend the ordinance, I'm just here to present it.
Well, I would move to table and perhaps someone could rewrite it to make it clearer or say that there is a notice provision if there is any change.
Would you instead maybe consider making some comments or allowing the entire board to comment on everyone's recommendations? And then I can send that to the board and that to the Solicitor, and then we can come back with a revised applicant, or revised plan? Or revised amendment?
But we wouldn't have to approve it tonight. We would just have our comments-
I'll take-
And then they'll come back to us.
Sure. Or you can make a, or you can make a recommendation that these changes be incorporated.
I think-
Whichever you prefer.
The intent is, I think from your comment, is that we would only like it to be allowable if it is being used for government purposes.
So to clarify the language.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because it does appear, because of the or, that it could be owned by the township and used for anything. But maybe the or order of the sentence might be able to fix that problem. I'm still, I'm a little bit concerned that it's pretty open-ended, that government use and purposes could be pretty wide-ranging. The Township does do a lot of different things here. I note that just recently the Township purchased a property and is taking it down to build a parking lot. And so I wonder if that allows the Township to purchase other properties and comfort those two government uses that might be more parking lots or parking garages, where zoning then would have no say in what's happening in the Township. And it restricts the resident's opportunity to provide input and feedback to the Township on what is happening in their township.
Currently, there's a section in the zoning ordinance under INS, institutional, which is all, basically almost all the township-owned properties, that allows for municipal buildings and, you know, certain other things, libraries, et cetera, as a use by right. But then allows, only allows for other governmental uses as a conditional use, which is an application that would come before this board and then go to the Board of Commissioners. This would, in effect, likely change that. So, yes.
If then the government was no longer owning a property, would it revert back to a zone? And would that be the zone that existed in that site before the government owned it?
So there's an interesting portion of the INS zoning district. INS is not necessarily a zoning district in itself. It's more of an overlay that allows for churches, schools, government uses, et cetera. But it says that in the event that that use, that INS use no longer is occupying the property, it comes before this board automatically as, you know, to review the zoning of the property and essentially incorporates, generally incorporates that parcel into the surrounding zoning district. So when it stops, it ceases the use as that institutional use. It will be generally zoned in whatever's surrounding it.
So is this then also kind of converting any property the government, the Township purchases to an INS zoning?
No, no. It does not change the zoning district.
Is all the ground owned by the Township as under INS?
A large portion of it, most of it is.
And are governmental uses allowed in all zoning districts?
No.
They're not?
No.
I'll just second Mr. Garrett's comments.
I had a question. When something goes through zoning, it gets a certain amount of like health, safety, and welfare review? Especially in terms of like sidewalk widths, parking lots, driveways, traffic studies. And I'm just concerned that with skipping the zoning step, that a lot of that's going to be missed. Would that open the Township up for additional liability if they construct a parking lot that causes an unusual amount of accidents or, you know, something other that would be along those lines?
So this is only relevant to the zoning ordinance, which doesn't necessarily design parking lots or traffic patterns or things of that nature. In the case particularly of the parking lot by the library. Chuck, is just Darby or is Mill, is, Mill's not a state road?
Not in that area.
No, thank you. So at least any exits or entrances on Darby Road would be subject to Penn dot approval. I'm certain that, you know, something, well, anything of over 1,000 square feet of new or replacement impervious requires the Township Engineers' review for store management. I'm certain that they would also probably be designing the parking lot itself. So we would, it would be the same, it would have, it would have a review process, just not in the same nature.
Okay. Because I guess that's the whole thing, just having those checks and balances, I think, is beneficial. And I agree that it also provides the community with notice, because the same checks and balances are what gets posted, and it's how the residents know to come out and give their opinion if it's affecting them and their neighborhood. Thanks.
Kelly, has there been any notice of this provision?
So this is the first time, I believe it was discussed briefly at the Board of Commissioners meeting, I want to say last month, but this is the first time it's being presented. If it were to move from this board, it would go before the Commissioners as a public hearing, followed by two readings to adopt the ordinance.
Has it been sent to the County Planning Commission?
It has.
Have we gotten comments back from them?
Well, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing no comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing, all appear to be in favor. The motion to table passes. Next item on the agenda is-
Well, do we, do we want to give them a reason why we're tabling it? So they know what it is that we're looking for? I think that's only fair.
Yeah, I think it was, most of the things that we just discussed, I could recap them. We are looking for clarification around the language. We are looking for clarification-
Specifically, what kind of clarification, the what language? The, the-
The or.
There's not that much language, that's why I ask.
I think it's the or, because-
The or?
The or, and I could read it as, "The provisions of this chapter shall not apply to land and buildings or portions thereof owned by the Township of Havford." Period.
Okay, so you only want this provision to apply to township-owned property?
Yes, I think that's one of the things that-
I think it's owned and used.
I think it was, whether it's owned or used by the Township is that it, this would only apply when there are governmental uses in place. I think that was one of the concerns, but also understanding what those governmental uses and purposes are. And if there is any clarification on what those governmental uses and purposes are, because like the example that you made, Mr. Capuzzi, regarding the Brookline Park, the Township owns that property and could now develop it however they see fit, if they don't have to go before the zoning board.
True, but they've had probably half a dozen public hearings on that property, and it's no surprise to anybody in there.
Talk necessarily about Brookline Park development now, but this is a pretty open-ended ordinance change that removes the ability for the residents of the Township to come before a zoning board and express their opinion in a place where it holds substantially more weight than the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Would it be satisfactory if it said owned and used?
Or would there be a way for them to list like very specific situations in which they would utilize this?
It's hard to predict what the future's going to bring. I mean, we know two projects in particular.
Well, could they just limit it to those two projects for now and then come back with it later if they want to make it a long-term ordinance? Can you do a temporary ordinance?
I think, I think it's been tabled, I think if we provide general commentary to the board, rather than trying to redraft it for them, that might be a more sensible way to go. Because as a committee, I think it would be hard for us to rewrite it.
No, but I think they have the right to know what it is our objection is.
As we point out, our objection being that it allows for the Township to own a property, lease it to someone else for non-Township uses, and does not provide, allows the Township to make zoning changes without public input. And we think it should be done, some of us think it should be, they should consider doing it by standard zoning procedures, which allow for review perhaps by the Planning Commission and public hearings.
For clarification, the Board of Commissioners does often enter into lease agreements with outside entities that are private businesses. Certain businesses within the stadium are a good example. The Havemberger-
YMCA?
The YMCA is a ground lease, but yes, essentially. Anyway, there are, there are many instances of that happening. That's not necessarily unusual. The cell towers are all ground leases. So that, that is not part of the ordinance that's necessarily being considered. Just only that, that they are exempt from zoning regulations for their own uses and not for the uses of those private entities.
Again, that's the concern that's been expressed about the way it's worded. So they ought to reconsider, reconsider changing the wording.
I just wanted to clarify the lease portion of it.
And the opportunity for public input.
Of course.
I think those are the big concerns.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, hold on, I had one other thing that I wanted to say. Because you provided this list of all of the other Townships and which county they're in throughout the state of Pennsylvania that have this exact same ordinance.
Not exact same ordinance, but similar ordinances. Some ordinances do not exempt the non-governmental lesses and allow them to be exempt as well.
I'm not going to read this list, but I wanted to make sure that this goes in the minutes and that it's part of the record for this meeting.
Questions, comments, thoughts, queries? Good.
Perhaps if they would like to re-present, re-present this, it would be a great idea if someone who wanted to advocate for it came to the meeting. I'm sure you agree.
I, I was, I was given the task to present. I'm not advocating nor not advocating as the zoning officer and the person in charge of planning. It puts me in a interesting Jekyll and Hyde situation. But I tried to present it as unbiasedly as possible.
I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yep.
Okay, the Well Tower Inc. zoning sketch plan review is the next item on the agenda. Could you tell us your name and address?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening. My name is Dan Rowley. I'm with the law firm of Saul Ewing. I'm here tonight representing the applicant in this tentative-
Dan, could you spell your last name, please?
Sure. R O W L E Y.
Thanks.
I'm here tonight representing the applicant for this tentative sketch land development plan. And they are also the owner of 731 Old Buck Lane and 855 Martin Avenue. So the applicant is the owner of this one lot in Havford Township, which contains an assisted living facility known as Brandywine Senior Care at 731 Old Buck Lane and a single-family dwelling at 855 Martin Avenue. So in 1997, when the assisted living facility was developed, these properties were consolidated into one lot with two uses. The applicant is requesting a simple subdivision of the property in two lots, one for the assisted living facility, one for the single-family dwelling. There's no construction or development proposed as a part of this application. So the reason for the subdivision is really to return 855 Martin Avenue to a single-family dwelling in the same character as the surrounding area on Martin Avenue, Miller Avenue, and Penn Street.
Can I interrupt for just one second?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
For clarification, the residential property exist, I mean, the house exists on that property now?
It does.
That's why no, no construction is contemplated or tearing down that house?
No. Yeah, so both of these buildings that are on the plan, the assisted living facility and the single-family dwelling exist today.
Thank you.
Yeah. The existing condition of 855 Martin as a part of a personal care facility is an oddity, really. It's not in line with the current residential neighborhood. And the proposed subdivision will restore the single-family nature of that neighborhood and allow for a property owner to either live in or operate the property more efficiently than a personal care facility that does not have the expertise to operate and lease a one-single-family home. My understanding is the home at 855 Martin is currently vacant. Over the years, it's sometimes been used to house some employees of the assisted living facility and family members. But the applicant operates in his assisted living facility. Again, they're not in the business of owning and leasing single-family homes. So that's really the basis for our request. In our plans and in our submission, we identified three variances that we intend to request from the zoning hearing board. One is a variance to permit a minimum lot size for the assisted living facility of 3.4937 acres, where 3.5 is required. In our opinion, this is a de minimis variance. It's only .0063 acres over the minimum requirement. There you go. Second would be a variance to permit impervious coverage on the assisted living facility of 51.7, where a maximum of 50 is permitted. Again, we also believe this is de minimis in nature. And then the third we identified was to permit a gross density of 25.19 units per acre, where maximum gross density of 25 units is permitted. We also view this as de minimis. Essentially, there's currently 88 personal care units in the assisted living facility, and under that calculation, under code, we're permitted to have 87. So it's essentially one unit over with the subdivision. We also received a review letter from the Township Engineer dated November 6th that identified another code provision that does not permit a subdivision unless the existing building complies with all dimensional requirements of code. It's a, it's a little bit of an odd provision. So we are, and you can see on the plan, the single-family dwelling is an existing non-conformity to the side yard setback. So that's essentially what is triggering that provision under code. That side yard setback is not affected at all by the subdivision. And again, that building is existing there today. And, you know, that is also, that side yard setback, I haven't seen plans or surveys of the other properties in that area, but to my eye, it seems consistent with the, you know, remaining residential neighborhood. So what we're looking tonight from the Planning Commission is really your feedback on our plans, on the variances we would intend to request from the zoning hearing board. Those, those are four items that have been identified, identified as relief for the reasons I laid out. We believe they're fairly minor in nature. But with that, I'll, I'll turn it back to the board with any questions, comments.
And for clarification-
Yeah.
When you say feedback, you're interested in our thoughts? And you'll come back for a final vote? Or you're interested in our approving these proposals tonight?
So this is just a tentative sketch review plan? We would be, we are anticipating applying to the zoning hearing board for this relief. You know, the purposes of submitting this tentative sketch plan, one was to have the Township review it, Township staff review it, and, you know, double-check that there was an additional relief required and there was, you know, that one provision I pointed out. And also to get feedback from the Township Planning Commission as to, you know, any issues they foresee, you know, just general feedback that we can take and if we need to adjust anything before we go to the zoning hearing board.
Thank you.
Are there comments from the members?
I'm, I'm interested to know what the Township found during the review. I'm specifically looking at this property, wondering how fire access is handled. And when I look at the area of use, it looks like the driveway for the house at 855 Martin appears to be a throughway to the senior living community, even though it's not paved.
Yeah, so, so I can address that a little bit. And I apologize, we were going to have our engineer here, Bob Newton, with Karens and Associates, but he had a last-minute medical emergency, so it's just me tonight. But in 1997, that was discussed, that that is a fire access, emergency access, essentially that driveway. And there's landscaping along the, that shared, it's not a property line, what we'd be proposing to be a property line. But there is a gap in the landscaping to allow access there. So that was discussed a lot when this building was being developed. And there was talk of an easement. I have reviewed the title. Our engineer has also reviewed the title. We have not found any evidence that there is an easement in that area. But I, I think this would be an opportunity to do it, to, you know, formalize an easement there. So it's recorded and, you know, that could be a condition of approval of our zoning or-
They wouldn't need an easement there if it was one contiguous property with two curb cuts, though, right?
So I think they, they did want an easement, but it was never, it was never, you know, formalized.
For clarification, I did speak with our fire inspector.
Okay.
And asked if he was aware of this easement and whether, you know, that was an access point that they would be aware of using and, you know, be needful of using. Answer was yes. They are aware of it. I don't know that it's ever been used in the past.
That's my understanding as well, that-
But, so establishing an easement that should have been recorded back in, you know, when this, when the conditional use plan was previously approved, I think would be a fantastic idea. Also, this is coming right on the heels of us having an active fire at one of our other assisted facilities in the Township, not far from here. Quite timely to address that issue and make sure that that access is maintained, because the turning ratios do appear quite high.
Yeah, and I think we've kind of seen this as an opportunity to, to kind of remedy that through, as a condition of approval, whether it's a zoning or subdivision and land development.
I, I'm trying to understand what it would look like if there was an easement there. It seems to me like it should actually be an extension of the driveway. And I'm also looking at all of the- And I'm also looking at all of the adjacent properties, and it looks like they're a series of duplexes with very narrow properties. And this property is like almost three times the size of any of the adjacent properties. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't make more sense for that drive from the assisted living complex to actually access Martin Avenue and have the property be more appropriately sized for that home.
So, just so I'm understanding, so the, essentially the driveway and a sliver of the Martin Avenue property would stay with the assisted living facility property? I, I mean, I would have to look at code. I would think that would require more variance relief, but I, you know, I don't think we're, we have to review that. I think it would require more zoning relief, but we can look at that and we can look at extending that driveway.
The zoning board is reasonable, and I think if we're looking at this and that's appropriate, then the zoning board's gonna get behind it, too.
That's something we can look at.
So I think that's just a solution that I might consider. This is actually a fire lane to there. This is the driveway. This is their road, and it's one long road from what that other, is it Haverford?
Old Buck.
No, Old Buck Lane is out here. And there's a long road that comes to the assisted living, only one. But when I look at the aerial view, that driveway is used. Right? It's worn out. You can see that they regularly use it to go in and out there. And I'm saying, make that driveway a fire lane on this, in this property.
So just to, you know, correct you, as far as I know, that has not really ever, if rarely if ever, used that driveway by the assisted living facility. I think when the building was, the single-family dwelling was occupied, it was used by, you know, whoever lived there. But that's, my understanding is that has rarely if ever been used for the assisted living. They have maintained, you know, a gap in the landscaping to allow for that use, but that's my understanding.
Other comments from the members?
The existing building that's there on that lot?
The single-family home.
Is that going to be continued, used as a single-family?
Yeah, there's no change of use, you know, proposed. I think we would just be selling it to, you know, on the market as a single-family home.
I assume there'd be no covenants on the sale. The buyer could do what they wish with the property?
Yeah.
Like any other property?
Right. If it was a permitted use, you know, they would have to comply with your zoning code and, you know, there may be a condition of approval that we put an easement in there. But other than that, yes.
And on the other side of that access road, is that residential?
Uh, I believe that's open. I think it's owned by the township.
Township property?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, it's owned by the township.
Which is owned by the township?
So, left, yeah, of the single-family home.
I mean, that, it looks like a park, but along Martin, it looks like it continues to be residential.
I see two more properties.
Yeah, I do see that on the aerials well. I'm not sure if that's...
And then the park.
Right.
Any additional comments from the members? Angelo?
Yeah, why were the lot consolidated in 1997?
I think it was to meet that minimum lot area. That's my understanding. But I was not involved in it. The applicant was not the developer as well. But kind of piecing together from the decisions and some of the transcripts that I've looked at, that's my understanding.
Okay, so we're looking to reverse something that was done in 1997 in order to, that was done in order to comply with the ordinance requirement at the time. We're looking...
That's, you know, kind of reading the tea leaves, that's my understanding.
All right. Is there any impervious on the main property that can be removed?
That is something I can ask my...
There's a, it seems to be like another access point down towards Old Buck Lane to an adjacent property.
Yeah, it's labeled as access, but, you know, I can, I can look at that.
The reason I ask is, in my experience, that you need to try to minimize the various requests that you have. And the reasons for the various requests, your hardships and things like that. And by making a slight adjustment to that proposed property line at the back of the residential lot, you could easily pick up the acreage that you're short. But you don't, you can eliminate that variance request. And that will also minimize the variance required that you're requesting for the other two variances. You can minimize those requests also. And it wouldn't look unusual because that property line would become more parallel with the back of the house and the shed and things like that. So it wouldn't be too awkward.
So you're essentially, so I think that line was put there because, I think it was...
It follows the other line.
And it follows the other in a line, but you're essentially saying to push it...
Rotate it a bit, you could minimize...
Rotate it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we can look at that.
The...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify before you go any further. That access drive is for Mainline Art Center.
For who?
Mainline Art Center.
Mainline Art Center?
Right.
Okay.
I wanted to note that Mainline Art Center is on the Historic Property Register.
They are.
In case any construction is going to happen.
As far as I know, and I believe you could confirm, that there is no construction being proposed?
It's simply adding a lot line property line.
And, yeah, that wouldn't affect them.
In prison?
I mean, there's no plans to, you know, change the plans unless, you know, we're getting feedback from you to see if we need to make any adjustments, but, yeah, there's no construction proposed as part of this.
Would you be willing to accept the condition that if the subdivision is approved, that the residential lot would be restricted from further subdivision?
You know, I'd have to talk with my client, but I don't see that as being an issue.
Okay, because the lot area is relatively small and it, you possibly could squeeze another narrow house in there, try real hard. The plan shows a 15-foot side yard setback.
Correct.
But the zoning table shows a 7-foot side yard setback.
So I think that's, that's the existing nonconformity there.
No, no. The requirement shows seven feet in the zoning table. And the plan lists 15 feet. So it's either 15.
I will have that double-checked.
Oh, yeah, but, but, but again, my, my thoughts are that you want to do whatever you can to minimize the number of variances you request and the extent to which you need relief. And if you can shift the property line in order to achieve that, that would be, that would help your case with the zoning board, I think.
Further clarification, so a single-family dwelling in the R6 zoning district does have a 7-foot minimum side yard setback with a 14-foot aggregate. I believe that the 15-foot side yard setback shown is mislabeled. I think that's the 15-foot easement. Uh, no, they're only showing the 15-foot on, are they showing it on those votes?
They are, where we are.
Okay. Well, I think the 15-foot was supposed to be the easement, but 7 feet is the side yard setback.
Okay, and you also need to pay attention to the township engineer's comments regarding existing utilities.
Right.
So if they are utilities that service the main lot, then obviously easements have to be provided for those utilities, otherwise they have to be relocated.
Yeah, right. And I think we could take care of that in the, you know, fire access and utility easement.
In modifying the subdivision request so that you're not actually providing an easement, that you're just owning the property that is the fire lane and the utilities from Martin to the assisted living facility? And when you do that, the home no longer has a driveway? Or their driveway is the fire lane?
Well, that's, yeah, there's common driveways all over the township. There can be a joint use there. I don't see that being a problem. But, I mean...
Well, wait, if your driveway is the fire lane and there's a fire, how does that work?
You can't be parked?
You can't park in the driveway.
It would have to be labeled access similar. Right now, the access is labeled into and out of Martin Avenue, and that would have to move to where the label says asphalt going toward the garage.
Yeah, where it makes that 90-degree turn.
So I, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of different considerations that we might be looking at if that property line was moved and what considerations would we have for that property or for the single-family home? Where is a curb cut, if a curb cut is needed? And how do you avoid occupying that fire lane?
They do have to come back through for subdivision approval, so we'll get to...
I understand.
Play that apple when that comes through.
For sure.
I was a little confused. Could you explain the 88 unit versus 87 unit?
Yeah, so it's, it's three-point, so it's, it's, the gross density is essentially 25 units allowed per acre. So at 3.47, 3.4937, we, that is a requirement of essentially 87 units. And in the current existing building, my understanding is there's 88 units. So it's, the current ratio permitted by code is 1 to 25, and we're at 1 to 25.19.
And are you saying that with this house, you're okay, you're permitted?
Correct.
But with that, if you divide it and the house becomes a separate property?
We're .19.
Then you're not in compliance and need a variance.
Correct.
But that's another calculation that gets resolved if the property line is moved?
Yeah, it minimizes everything.
Otherwise, you have one larger assisted living unit in that building?
I mean, the whole reason for variances is there's gotta be some type of hardship, and you're creating the hardship. There's no reason you're doing it other than you want to get rid of the property.
Well, I, so I guess my follow-up to that would be, and without knowing what the relief is, but it seems like the commission would be supportive of variances, whether it's to a side yard or what have you, to keep a portion of that driveway on the assisted living property.
Yeah, the only problem with that is you're picking up all that additional impervious, so it could bump up your numbers on it.
Yeah, I don't know how it will affect that.
You have to look at those numbers.
Yeah, so that's why we, you know, we'll have to go back and see if that's feasible.
I mean, if there's somewhere on this site where you can take impervious out to compensate, you know, that, that might work, too.
Yeah, it's a fairly tight site, but that's something we can certainly look at.
You don't have any extra parking spaces, it looks like.
No, that, yeah, I did look at that.
I don't know if it's ever been done in this township before, but what I've seen in, in other municipalities is our fire lanes that are not impervious, that are load-bearing and green.
We do have a number of those. One I can think of specifically is at the YNCA, I believe. Chuck, is there one here? No.
So that would be a way to remove a substantial amount of impervious from that strip. But then again, we start talking about the, the single-family home.
Right, yeah, and that was what I was, was gonna be my follow-up. I mean, we can look at doing that for that green space that currently exists from the kind of end of that driveway to the assisted living property, but I don't know if that would work as a driveway for a single-family home.
I'm sure your civil engineer is gonna look at this with a different perspective after you leave here and come up with some ideas that will be helpful.
That's why we're here.
Any other? Seeing none, hearing none?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Kelly, how do, how do our comments get submitted to the zoning board?
We will do a letter in your name, writing out the recommendations and providing that to the zoning hearing board.
Okay, thank you. Is this on the, an agenda anytime soon?
It has not been submitted yet.
Okay. All right, so you might make some plan changes before you submit?
Good evening. Yes, my name is Carl Ewald. I'm an attorney from media at 205 North Monroe Street. I'm here on behalf of Jim Miller Roofing, and Jim Miller is here with me. We're talking about the building at 2228 Haverford, which if you think about where the bowling alley is, right across the street from the bowling alley, in the, right in the middle of the fork of the road there. It's been a car service station for a very long time. I would imagine that it predates the zoning ordinance in that it was a gasoline service station at one time. And it had a addition put on the back. And you, when you look at the plan here, you can see there's this weird division of the property, kind of off-splitting the addition in the back. And, you know, I provided some pictures of the property as it looked when Mr. Miller purchased the property. The prior owner had not endeavored to maintain the property terribly much over the last couple of decades. So it had fallen into disrepair. And there were also just conditions that were not very considerate of the neighbors. There was storage of tires just, just hanging out next to the property line. They had this giant trailer stuffed with various items right on the property line. And since acquiring the property, Mr. Miller has endeavored to just get rid of that trailer, to get rid of the irresponsible storage of those tires. And has worked with the neighbors to maintain and upgrade the landscaping along the border. And Nick and Linda Maroli are here tonight. There are, they're the neighbors who are really most impacted by this property. They live just to the, I guess that's the east of the property on Haverford Road. When we, we've already been to the zoning board. The zoning board has approved the use. The zoning board has approved, uh, the use, uh, but one of the conditions of their approval was that we have to request and apply for a consolidation of the two lots. So that's the first thing we're here on. I think that's a pretty simple one. We, the zoning board's requiring us to do it. Um, and it takes this really weird, uh, two-lot structure and, and puts it into a really weird one-lot structure. And then the, the second part of our application is that we're requesting a second-floor addition. Uh, there's two uses here. Previously, under the former owner, it was a, uh, car repair business on the corner. And then on Caricon, it was, it was a warehouse use where he was leasing the warehouse out to various people, like Snap-on Tools had its, um, space there. I, I'm not sure who the other tenants were. Yeah, it is, um, Caricon, so Haverford runs, it, it's right at the fork, so Caricon runs between this property and the bowling alley. So, uh, what we're doing with the property is we're maintaining that, that, um, uh, car repair business on the corner, uh, but the warehouse business, um, is, is becoming the headquarters for Jim Miller Roofing. Jim's been a, a business owner here in the township for 25 years? Almost 30 years. Uh, and he's moving all of his office, or the hope is he moves all of his offices into the second-floor addition and uses the first floor for the warehouse, uh, for, for the, um, roofing business. There's also an outdoor storage yard, uh, immediately to the south of the, of the warehouse. We did receive yesterday a review letter from the township engineer. And, um, we haven't had a chance yet to get, uh, our engineer to, to draft a response letter, but the vast majority of these are, will comply or have complied. The, you know, the vast majority of these comments relate to just adding notes and, and features to the plan. So anything where we're just adding a note or a feature to the plan, obviously, we're going to add those. There is a comment about parking, um, and I think, when I was, when I was preparing today for the hearing, I noticed that our architect had kind of, I, I'm not sure why, but on the second page, um, of the application, where she lays out what the uses are of the property, she, she, she divided into four uses instead of three, and she gave it weird labels. So she, so I, I think that may be a part of the, the reason why, um, the engineer wasn't sure about the parking. We have essentially three uses. The first use is this car repair business. The car repair use requires one, uh, space for every 200 square feet plus five spaces for overnight parking. So that would, that's, uh, about 1,400 square feet. So that requires seven plus five, you know, 12 spaces. And then we have a, a little bit less than 3,300 square feet of office space. That's a one for every 200, um, so that's 16 and a half spaces required. Uh, and then we have, um, 3,500 approximately square feet of warehouse space, and that's one for every thousand, so that's three and a half. Uh, so, um, we're looking at approximately, um, 31 spaces needed. There's 25 striped spaces, uh, the, there's, that, when we were with the zoning board, the zoning board, uh, we discussed there's going to be, um, you know, overnight cars can, or cars can be stored in the garages, so there's at least three spaces for the three bays of this, of the, um, car use, the car repair use. And then we have the indoor spaces. The zoning board wants us to store any of the roofing business, uh, vehicles that are onsite overnight inside of the warehouse. So there's, you know, that, that warehouse is 60 feet deep, and there's two different entrances, so, uh, we can store, you know, a, a minimum of three or six, I'm sorry, three in the one side and, and two in the other. And then we have the storage yard. The storage yard, you know, if, if a, the vehicle were left overnight outside, it would be kept in the storage yard. So we, we believe we have more than ample parking, uh, for the use. And the, the second-floor office use is for only eight people, so though we're reserving 16 spaces, uh, it's, it's 16 parking spaces for eight people, um, then the only other, I mean, generally, all the other part, all the other comments, it appears to me, are, relate to just how we note from things on the plan and adding specifications to the plan. You know, we need to note the location of required screening for the trash enclosure, and that's an easy thing we can comply with. The location of the landscape buffering, um, for 2220 Haverford, uh, we can add the, those notes onto the plan as well. And, you know, that's about it. You know, we, the, you can see how the property looks now, and you can see what he's planning to do with it to make it a heck of a lot more attractive, uh, property and invest in a, a property that hasn't been invested in in a long time. Um, and so we're here looking for, uh, recommendation, uh, to the commissioners for approval of preliminary and final, uh, land development.
Just, just to clarify, the current owner of this property is JPM Haverford Road?
Yes.
And that is mainly Mr. Miller's Roofing Company?
Yes.
And when was the property purchased?
December, is that? We...
Five months ago.
Yeah. It was under agreement when we were from the zoning hearing board, and after we received approval, the zoning hearing board, he went over through with the sale.
Was that this last December?
Yes.
2022? And what is the, just to break it down, what is the present use of this property? With the present spaces, who, who uses them, who operates them? Are they leased out or are they all operated by Mr. Miller? If you'd like to comment, please come up and tell us your name and address.
My name's Jim Miller.
Hi, Jim, thank you.
Uh, the, the previous use was an auto repair shop, and it still currently is an auto repair shop. Yes, just the front. The existing... I own the entire property. I bought the repair business and I bought the building.
So you're gonna operate the repair?
I'm gonna operate the repair business.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's approximately 1,400 square foot.
Then the, the brown brick portion of the building is where the, the roofing company is.
Are there any other uses of the property?
Not, no. And the zoning board restricted us to two, two uses.
Any comments from the members?
Um, yes, I had a question for Kelly. So this is in 100, 100 feet of Winwood Lanes. Winwood Lanes has not yet responded to their invitation from the Historic Resource Survey. I'm not 100% sure what that means.
So unless, uh, they were already, uh, adopted and incorporated into the Historic Resource Survey, um, anything that happens prior is, um, I don't wanna say free game, but essentially grandfathered since it's not, uh, yet been incorporated into the survey.
Okay, so they won't be reviewing it? That's...
So, um, could one of the conditions of this board be that they, uh, are cognizant of the fact that there is a potential historic resource across the street and to, um, take care into making sure that, you know, there's no damage done to that building? Yes, uh, but not, um, not as protective and requiring review from the historical commission, uh, as it would be if it were on the survey.
Okay, thank you. And then a second note, um, I was just Googling the property to get the satellite view, and I noticed that 2228 is also the address of Winwood Lanes? And I found that strange because they are across the street, but it was still a Haverford Road address? And again, I'm sure it's just some sort of odd coincidence, but I just wanted to make note that...
Yeah, I have no idea why that would be.
I'm aware of that, and, uh, I, I have worked with Carl, but if their address actually says 22...
It does. Yeah, 'cause I double-checked on their website, 'cause I thought it was really strange.
Yeah.
And, um, it's, yeah.
No, it's bizarre.
Okay, but I just wanted to make note of that.
Sorry, can, can you, uh, please approach the podium and introduce yourself first?
I'm Nick Maroli.
This is recorded, so the mic...
Okay. Nick Maroli, I live at 2220 Haverford Road on the east side of, of the, the property. The, the house that I live in was built by DeMarco, who built the gas station and built the, the bowling alley. So that's the history as to why that probably is 2228.
Okay.
So I thought I'd throw that in there, just...
Thank you. During the land development process or after the land development process, I'm wondering if it might not be a good idea, 'cause I had the same exact problem when we were, um, when we were seeking to put Winwood Lanes on the Historic Resource Survey in the first place, and I was sending them certified mail, and it was going all over the place. Um, I, I had the same issue. Uh, it may be a good idea to maybe address the address issue, uh, at that point, uh, if nothing else for emergency services, um, so that you don't have people going to Winwood Lanes if you have a car laying on, on top of someone or some sort of accident, uh, and that way we can, you know, get that cleaned up.
And then jumping back to the historic, well, the non-historic, but the potentially someday historic property across the street, um, Kelly, can you speak a little bit more to, um, what the recommendations usually are during construction for adjacent properties to take care, to protect an adjacent building? And I do realize this is across the street, so it's not like so adjacent that you would be literally against it, but...
So it's generally within 100 feet of the, uh, resource itself to where the work is being performed. Um, I think with the, you know, right-of-way on Caricon, plus, you know, any setbacks that exist, you're probably looking at not very much. And also, this is the second story addition?
Right.
Uh, so we're not looking at new foundations, uh, we're not really looking at a lot of earth disturbance, um, there are no, not a ton of vibrations, 'cause they're not digging into the ground a whole lot. Uh, so I'm not terribly concerned about this project, but normally, uh, those are the types of things that we consider and ask that the developer, uh, or contractors take care into, uh, when they're, when they are working.
Yes.
But Winwood Lane specifically did not respond to requests to join the historical resource?
Well, they, they, they did, and then they changed their mind. I don't know if we've gone the pendulum the other way. Neither here nor there. It is not on the resource survey at this time, but I do appreciate, um, you know, uh, being proactive.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna talk about any of the normal aesthetic considerations or anything. This was more of just a protect and preserve. All right, and then this other thing I wanted to bring up is that the Delaware County Planning Department issued their recommendation, and in their recommendation, they talked about stormwater management and impervious surfaces. And because you have so much pervious materials, which are your parking lot and your roof, and I understand that these are existing, but they're suggesting that you could possibly look at, since you're mentioned that you're providing landscape buffers, that you can look at, you know, sloping any driveway that you can, putting the buffers towards the downslope, and then possibly creating your planting areas in, to be a rain garden, so that they can, you know, contain the water and have the types of plants that will absorb them. I know that Havertown has the volunteer have-a-garden department, so you can look them up on the website, and they can, I'm sure there's volunteers there that would be happy to help advise. And sometimes they even pick projects around the township where they come out and they help you dig it up and do the planting. So you could definitely reach out to them as a resource. Have-a-garden. So that was all I had for now.
Other comments?
I have a, a couple, um, don't we require, Chuck? Do we require sidewalks to be installed when there, where there are none?
There is a general requirement to require sidewalks to be installed. They're not doing any, any additional here, but it can, it can be, it can be added, yes.
Okay. The, um, I, the, the township engineer raised several questions about parking in general and circulation and things like that, and I, I would agree with him that, you know, the layout is a little bit, I, I'll use the word haphazard, but there isn't any real logic to it. I mean, there's several curb cuts and, and things like that, depending upon where you come into the property, there may be a parking space, there may not be a parking space. I, I just think you need to give a little more attention to, to how the parking lays out and how the circulation on the property is gonna work best. It's, it's, I know it's a tough piece of ground, given its, its location and the, and the angle of the intersecting streets, but, um, I, I, I think there might be a better way to, to put the parking in and get some decent amount of, of circulation. You got cars parked in front of garage door bays and very little room between the parking space and the garage door bay. It's just, uh, I think needs another set of eyes to look at it and give it some thought. I noticed on the plan that the, uh, chain link fence, the storage yard in back of the building is over the property line, is that something you're gonna correct? Pull that back onto your property or...
We'll have to resolve that. The, the neighbor doesn't care currently, and, um, we'll have to resolve that with the neighbor.
Okay. Um, and generally, um, there is sidewalk along Haverford Road, but it's on private property. Uh, normally, the sidewalks, um, are in the public right-of-way. So in the case whether or not, we usually look for some type of easement for the sidewalk so that there's no question that people can walk along that sidewalk and not be considered trespassers.
I'm, I'm only curious to, I mean, I, I second everything that Angelo said there because I think it's all salient, but, um, I assume that all of these parking spaces will be striped in, that it's, we're not gonna leave it the way it is right now, where the parking spaces could exist, but they're not actually drawn on the...
Correct. And I, that was part of the requirements of the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
Where is the, where is the, um, um, truck loading and unloading space? And what is the access to that?
So... So what do you, what do you mean by loading and unloading?
Well, I assume there's gonna be trucks delivering roofing materials and picking up materials?
On the right side of the building, which is probably about 2,000 square foot, and it actually goes around the building. So from Caricon, you could pull in and physically drive around the building to Haverford Road. Not that we can do that, but it, that's how it is now, but if we do get deliveries, they would just pull into our yard, we would unload them to the warehouse, then they would just pull right back out.
Can you move to the last drawing in the package?
And your yard does not face Caricon or Haverford Road?
It faces, uh, Caricon.
So you have trucks...
The next to the Mulch Face, so I'm, I'm adjacent to the Mulch Company.
But that, you'd come in that gate and you'd be off, off Caricon. You're not gonna park the trucks along Ha, along Caricon.
Correct.
I, I, it, it wasn't clear when I was reviewing this that that was the use case, that trucks are pulling all the way through. They're not backing back out onto Caricon, because the, all of these parking spaces that we're showing are in the area where that truck would drive out.
Yeah, so, so if I...
I, I had to move the drawing up so that you can see it. The, the chain link is in the bottom right, and that's where the trailer is down on the bottom right. The truck drives in there and then goes out the top of this drawing, but all of those parking spaces are lined up. So there's no... There's no real way for... there's no real way for a truck to be able to drive all the way through there.
We really wouldn't get 18-wheelers and stuff like that.
Okay.
Down there. I mean, if anything, we have our own trucks and we don't stock a whole lot. So you know, once in a while there may be, but you know, there's plenty of them on Caricon. It is an industrial, you know, street right now. We have the mulch place next to us, the tree guy. So.
Across the street, the auto detailer.
And the deliveries are, these are stakebody trucks. These aren't like, you know, these are small trucks. You've got 19 feet between the right-of-way and the and the yard.
If a truck can back right out, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
We just can't assume that a truck is pulling all the way through because then the seven proposed spaces that we're talking about don't work anymore.
Understood.
I heard, Julia, were you recommending adding green space on here?
If at all possible, I know in other areas of the township, we've talked about adding even a green buffer along the road. I just don't know because of the existing conditions if that's too tight here. They had mentioned they were adding the buffer between their property and the neighbors where they were cleaning up the tires. So I thought that would at least be one option.
It's a really tough intersection right there and I travel through there pretty often. And it definitely looks haphazard the way the auto repair shop has parked cars in that area. And I'm wondering if actually beyond the four spaces that are toward the the Y intersection actually is, does become a pervious, a green space. Rather than, because I think even if you look at the aerial view right now on Google, you can see there's a couple of random cars like tucked in next to that signpost. And that would really make it much more attractive at that area as well, I think.
I would certainly do that, you know, because there is a sign at the point of that property, so I could do, you know, a nice big plan or.
Yeah.
The other thing next to Nick and Linda's house, my property line is actually six feet off. So like over the years, that hill has slid down over my existing pavement. So we wanted to cut that back, which would get us an additional six feet along his property line, you know, and put up a nice retaining wall.
Which is, that's the proposed stone retaining wall?
Yeah. And then put up a privacy fence so, you know, they don't have to look at the building.
Would that require removing any trees?
There are some trees now. Yes, we do need to cut some down, but they're dying anyway and they're dead.
I totally understand that and maybe the neighbors are 100% on board with that plan, but I think that needs to be shown. That there are trees that would be removed in order to add a wall at that space. Those trees probably slid right along with the hill over the years.
Well, there's also above the hill, on the north end of the hill, there's the triangular parcel that's labeled trees and bushes. So that's initially where I had been thinking that maybe if it wasn't currently a formal like setting of naturally growing trees that are native to the area, if they're trying to clean it up, that would be an option.
And let me reiterate, when I say trees, it's more brush, right? Yeah, it's mostly brush.
The aerial view just looks dark green and I can't tell exactly what it is there, but.
And one of the trees is going to stay on their property, which is a large, older tree.
Each of the curb cuts along Havreford Road look like they're not actually aligned with access into the space? Or am I misunderstanding how circulation works on?
So I think he drew the existing curb cuts, but we're going to do all-new curbing.
Okay. So, so we're not, we're not going to redo the curbing the way that it's shown right here. We're going to change the curbing so that it better aligns with circulation.
I'm going to do whatever needs to be done to get this project moving.
Can I make one point here? Are you, are you adding things to this plan now that are not currently shown on this plan? Like the retaining wall and the curb replacement and everything?
I see the retaining wall on this drawing right here.
Yeah, but it says, it doesn't say proposed, it looks a bit like it's existing.
Yeah, you're not wrong. Guess I'm only looking at the survey plan.
So to answer your question Chuck, there is an existing retaining wall along their property line, but it comes halfway down the property. And it's brush and all the dirt over the years has fallen down and it's just a big mess. So that's where we propose that, you know, we dig that up and add to the existing retaining wall, but it would only be short, you know, two foot high. And then put a privacy fence up for that on top of the wall is what the zoning board required us to do or asked us to do.
My point is if that could just be shown on the plan because it's not clear right now that that's what's going on.
So you're not proposing cutting any trees at this point?
Not trees. There's some brush that, you know, it's been grossly overgrown for 15 years. So yeah, I think the neighbors want it out. I'd like to get it out. So I can confirm that there may be one or two, but if any one from the planning commission wants to stop by, a lot of them are dead. They haven't been taken care of and, you know, they're in great shape.
And you know that if it is a tree of a certain diameter, it has to go to the tree commission for their approval. And you plan to do that if necessary?
I'm sorry, as a land development application, it needs to go to the shade tree commission for approval regardless, so.
Right. I know you've made a good faith effort to try to get the stormwater analysis and a traffic impact study. But I would hope those are still doable. I'd ask Chuck to comment on the stormwater analysis, but there have been a lot of concerns about traffic on, as you probably know, on Havreford Road. You're very well aware of the traffic problems and PennDOT studies and efforts at a traffic diet on Havreford Road. So I would say it's worth continuing to try to get that traffic study. I know you've been trying, but maybe you just need to urge them to come do it. Would that be acceptable to not, to withdraw that waiver request?
I mean, we can, we can look into whether we can find. I mean, it's, it's been very difficult. And as far as the stormwater goes, because there's no proposed change in impervious, it doesn't really feel like there's any point, but to, you know, for the, for the traffic study, you know, we can solicit more different engineers. I mean, it's, yeah, I'm sure you're aware and familiar with how difficult it is for small projects.
I'd like to comment on the, on the traffic study. I feel like it's almost a wash. I mean, the existing guy that was there, he had the three bays going, sometimes four bays. He had five mechanics over there. He had much more in and out and renters to where I'm only going to have three bays, so I cut the business in half and I only have eight employees, which are going to be parked there all day. I don't think I'm adding much more to what was there or what's going to go on for 20 years.
But you're adding more employees on the second floor, no?
Yeah, but it's office people that are going to be part to where Ed had for 20 years, five or six bays, six mechanics, in and out traffic all day. Where we're not doing that. We're, you know, we're stationary. Our people come in, they're in the office.
So even if he adds five people, you know, it's a road that has traffic counts of 8,000 to 15,000 cars. You know, it, you know, the impact is negligible.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've read traffic study reports and it's not only about the traffic. It's also about the circulation patterns. And I think that a traffic study would indicate how the circulation patterns into and off of this site are dysfunctional right now. And I think that is part of the reason why people coming up Caricon hang right through the repair shop parking lot to go up Havreford Road instead of waiting at the stoplight to go around the corner. And so, you know, there's a lot of things that might be improved in this based on what a traffic engineer might advise that isn't necessarily based on traffic, traffic counts. And I, and I don't think that we're not trying to make a burden on that. It's, it's, it's due diligence to make sure that we're not missing something else that a traffic engineer would come up with when they look at that space. And I think on the, and I can't speak for everyone on the planning commission, but on the stormwater, I realize that it's a difficult site to evaluate that and that you're not adding any impervious area, just that the whole property is impervious. And so showing some pervious things like a rain garden at the corner or something like that would go a long way to demonstrating that you're trying to reduce the amount of runoff rather than say, I'm not adding any runoff. Because reducing runoff is a goal and it goes a long way into improving the whole area. Rather than having ponding or lots of flooding when there is rain, especially at a three-way intersection like this.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Actually, it's not even just a three-way intersection, right? There's like one or two other roads that go off at odd angles at that intersection.
I get what you're saying and, you know, we're open to looking at, you know, ways to improve, you know, or implement some small green spaces, you know, understanding that there's a catch-22 that we, you know, the ordinance requires us to have parking, so we can't, you know, we can't get rid of impervious to detriment of the parking, but you know, we're certainly open to the, you know, to finding pockets where we can, you know, improve some pervious.
I think if there was a stormwater review, that would become a burden here, right? For this kind of reverse subdivision, it would be probably pretty painful to reduce the amount of runoff coming off of the site. So I don't know.
Yeah, I was just going to add that there's a roof for, there's always options with green roofing that also reduce runoff that you could consider. I understand that they're much more costly than just doing a couple of rain gardens to pull some of the water off the parking lot, but it is something.
Yeah, that's actually a good point. I mean, we, I could you know, maybe be willing to do a green roof on the flat roof portion, which would be good. But I was thinking about also doing solar.
I would also hope that you're going to be putting multiple different kinds of roofing on this so that we can all see what the different types look like when they're installed.
You might have an opportunity right at the, at the corner there. Right at the angle.
Yeah.
There might be some space area, take up that blacktop and put in a nice little rain garden. And basically anybody coming down Havreford Road, that's the first thing you want to see, you know, it might do a lot to dress up the place without taking up a lot of ground.
So I would even be willing to do over the auto repair shop, it's 1,400 square foot. So I could make that green.
You'll have to be able to get to it and maintain it.
Yeah, so our office will be, we'll have a step out once.
At the window.
That's what he'll look, look at from his office. It'll be nicer than the roof that's there right now.
It's a good marketing idea too. And I mean, not just the, I mean, they do have the deeper green roof systems that are heavier that you can put more substantial plants in, but you can even mix that with some of the tray systems that just have the mosses in. So you can play around with your options.
Just make sure that roof can take that load.
Yeah.
It could open up a whole new avenue for your business, right? Mr. Fogg, do you have any comment on the stormwater analysis or any thoughts on it?
Hey, look, it's, it's all impervious. I think everybody on the planning commission has stated that and agrees there's, it would be beneficial certainly to have some type of stormwater management there, whatever can be fit on there. It is a subdivision. He is required to do stormwater management, but there is no new impervious in there. And there's no land. There's no earth movement that meets that threshold either, so. But it would be certainly beneficial and I agree. I mean, that, that corner there where the two come together is a great spot for it. And maybe even in the back, somewhere in that, in that yard or something can be somewhat of a facility back there too, possibly.
Do you have a civil engineer working on this project or just a surveyor and an architect?
They have a civil engineer. But he, I don't know. Yeah, Carl.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get someone. I just don't know if he's still available. But on another note, we're speaking to, you know, the impervious. We are repaving the entire lot, so raid and pitch and all that.
For clarification, are you paving or are you resurfacing or are you replacing the existing impervious?
Well, if there's, obviously if we're going to plant something in the front, the water's going to need to run to it. And if it doesn't run to it now, we're going to need to make it go there. Rip it up, then we'll rip it up.
Okay, so aside from the requirements for stormwater management relating to a subdivision or land development or reverse subdivision, any project that exceeds 999 square feet, so anything that's 1,000 square feet or over of new or replacement impervious surface does require a stormwater management plan reviewed by the township engineer. So at that point, we're talking about absolutely needing a stormwater management plan with like a system.
What's there there.
Does a mill and overlay trigger that?
Does not.
No. You can replace the top layer so that it all looks nice without digging up the whole asphalt.
And what's the maximum?
999.
999.
I do have one question regarding, I understand that you're not increasing the footprint of the building at all.
Correct.
And the use on the first level is going to be a warehouse and truck storage? And the second floor is office? What's that first floor going to be used for? Or is it a repair shop? Is it going to involve use of materials that could be flammable?
The front, the tan part of the building is going to be a repair shop. The rear is storage.
Strictly storage?
Yeah.
Truck storage or material storage?
Yeah, the zoning board's asked us to store trucks inside if we're going to have a truck onsite overnight. Generally, we don't have trucks overnight, maybe one. But the techs take the trucks home with them, so it's not something that we generally have.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I think that we'll, we'll provide a response letter to the engineer's review. Yeah, and we'll, you know, obviously we'll have to revise the plan a bit to reflect that stuff, you know, and yeah.
Make sure your engineer looks at the subdivision ordinances and addresses all the comments, all the criteria that has to be put on the subdivision plan, okay?
Right, yeah. All those, all those comments, you know, they're all will comply.
Okay.
Thank you. Were there any other comments in the audience? The neighbors are in support of this plan?
I support it because of what it looked like before. And my concern was and still is that it's maintained nicely, kept clean, no debris as well as possible. You know, that's, that's my primary concern. You know, I'm living there. You know, I'm living there. I got to look at that all day, and the fence is going to help, but I still know it's going to be there. And the reason is because of what the guy was leaving there, was he was leaving tires full of water, he'd get mosquitoes, and mosquitoes, you know, love water, and I just want to keep it clean enough that there's no sitting water anywhere, you know, as, as much as possible. That's my concern.
Jim did a pretty good job in his current facility, so...
I know.
Any indication, I think, we'll turn that well for it.
That's why I'm standing behind him, because I saw what he did down the street, and I'm hoping, if it's anything like what that is down the street, I'm going to be happy. But my concern is still that it's clean, and I don't have to deal with mosquitoes, because I can't even sit outside, you know, used to.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marge, our next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes. Anybody would like to make that motion?
I'm here.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the last meeting, September... The September meeting of the planning commission. Who of us were here? I think we need, let's do it next month, is that all right, Marge? Okay. I'm not sure of the rules when we have a quorum tonight, but the quorum doesn't consist of three people over here at the last meeting. So, seeing nothing further on the agenda, are there any other matters that anybody would like to raise in the way of goodwill or information? I just want to give an update on the comp plan.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. The finishing committee has a virtual meeting scheduled for next Thursday, and afterwards, we'll have other face-to-face meetings, but the township manager has indicated he'd like to see the comp plan submitted, the final version submitted to the Board of Commissioners by January. Okay? That's great. That is great. Some people have asked about an opportunity for further comment before it's finalized. You, I think the game plan is that the commissioners will have a public hearing, and citizens will have the right to stand up and express their opinion about the plan, ask questions, whatever.
And really quickly, I was just going to share, the historic commission has been meeting, even though they didn't have any project last time, to work on their new brochure. This is a draft copy of it, that they take when they go to things like the Heritage Festival and set up their booths. I know that it was mentioned by the presenter that we had, that some planning commissions do things like that as well. And I'm not saying that we need to do something like that, but I just wanted to share that they've been doing that, and they're updating a brochure, so...
But the intent is, back to the comprehensive plan, the intention is not to come back to the planning commission. We've done what we've been tasked to do. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
One more thing. The Grange Estate Winter Fest is on Saturday, November 25th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's invited. What was that? November 26th? Isn't that the first day of the season? Saturday after Thanksgiving. Yeah, maybe we spoke... Well, I'd just like to repeat the request that we've had in the past, to try to get the comments on the proposals a little earlier. It would be helpful to have a few more days at least. But I also want to compliment everyone on the commission for their careful reading and comments. I'm just very impressed by them. So, thank you all. And it was sort of, almost a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, anyone against adjournment? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you.